Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. I proudly call our city council to order, and I ask that our clerk please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Here.
Berghardt?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kavan?
Here.
Hilberg?
Here.
Casarag?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, we begin our council meetings with the pledge of allegiance. I would like to invite the distinguished Police Department Deputy Chief Matt Dean, Sergeant Mark Russo, and Sergeant Jan Wokosz to lead us in the pledge. How's that? Beautiful.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have an exciting evening tonight, folks. We get to celebrate some promotions, recognize some people being appointed, and that's always the fun stuff of what we do as elected officials. So tonight, we were going to begin without any hesitation on considering the mayor's appointment of Mia Kellen to the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee. Unfortunately, Mia could not be with us tonight. Correct, Mr. McCready?
Correct.
So I'll entertain a motion to so appoint Ms. Kellen to SPAC.
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Mayor. Any questions, any comments regarding this? A voice vote is sufficient, all in favor of appointing Mia Kellen to the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, Ms. Kellen is now officially an appointed official of the City of Geneva. You want to take the microphone there, Nico? It's like Tim Conway's here. It's like, for the older people in the audience, of course. There he is. And now, folks, we have the joy of administering the oath to three gentlemen. Our first is the promotion and oath ceremony for Police Department Deputy Chief Matthew Dean. Mr. Dean, please join us at the podium. Hey, there you go. We're delighted to see you.
And I you, sir.
And today's a good day for Mr. Dean. I should say DC Dean, excuse me, because your predecessor, of course, retired today.
Correct.
So good to see him go, isn't it? That's what you said to me. It was like, you wanted his office.
I did want his office. I didn't want to see him go. If we could have switched, we've been all right.
I know, I know. Could you share with all of us how long you've been with the GPD and a little bit about your background?
I've been with GPD for almost 16 years now.
Wow.
I started my law enforcement career in the Quad Cities. I was a police officer with the Moline Police Department for four and a half years prior to coming here, and before that, I was a correctional officer in the Rock Island County Jail.
Wow. And you've got some fans with you tonight.
I do.
Would you like to introduce those fans?
I would, if that's...
Excellent.
I have my mom here, Katie.
Hi, Mom.
My brother Steve.
Now, Steve, Steve, well, Mom is Mom, so there's nothing higher than that. Steve is a retired officer with the Rock Island County Sheriff's Office, correct?
Yes, sir.
So isn't that cool?
He was the chief deputy.
Chief deputy. And this is your little brother?
Yes, sir. He was his fries in life.
Remember when you also said, "I hope my brother doesn't make it tonight"?
I did.
Well, Deputy Chief, surprise, who else is with us tonight?
My son George.
Hi, George.
And my other son, Henry.
Fantastic.
My wife Kristin.
Kristin, notice how he paused. I'm thinking, oh, God, if he forgets this.
Yeah, I know.
Can always postpone the swearing-in for another couple of weeks. We're delighted you're all here. Thank you very much. 16 years, isn't that something?
Goes by quick.
It certainly does. It certainly does. And obviously, you enjoy the work.
Of course, yes.
You and I had a chance to visit last week, and you shared with me not only your passion, but your purpose. Police work is in your family, of course. I know your family's excited about this opportunity. I know you're excited about this opportunity. Any special words you'd like to deliver to the community regarding your continued service in this new role?
No, but, you know, one thing does come to mind is legacy. We talked about it today when Deputy Chief Frieders retired, and I've thought about it a lot over the course of the last few weeks. Chief Passarelli was a sergeant when I started here.
Wow.
Deputy Chief Meduzia was one of my field training officers.
Is that right?
Yes. And then, of course, we talked about the background of my brother.
Absolutely.
And Deputy Chief Frieders and I worked very closely together as I was a detective and then detective sergeant under him when he was a deputy chief. So my purpose is to continue the legacy that my brother, Chief Passarelli, and then the Deputy Chiefs Meduzia and Frieders have started.
Well said. Mom, you must be very proud.
I am.
And have you always called the Quad Cities home, Mom?
Pardon?
Have you always lived in the Quad Cities?
Yes, always.
Wow, very cool. Well, anything else DC Han you want to say?
That's the other Matt.
I'm sorry, DC.
That's okay.
What the hell did I say?
DC Dean.
Congratulations. Oh, my God. Let's start this again. Mr. Dean, anything else you'd like to say?
No, sir, no.
Well, please invite whomever you'd like to join you while our clerk administer the oath, and we're going to get out of the way and snap some photos if that's okay with you.
Sure, absolutely.
Floor is yours, sir.
I'll have the boys, Kristin, my wife, and my brother.
Thank you.
Come on up. Mom, come on up.
We're going to invite you to come up here, guys, in front of the podium.
Just watch yourself.
George and Henry.
Joe, sign. Having been promoted to the position of Deputy Chief of Police in the City of Geneva, county of Kane, afore said, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Illinois. The Chief of Code of Ordinances. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of Deputy Chief of Police according to the best of my ability.
One document for you to sign, then we're going to have the other Matt come up and get sworn in. Ms. Dawkins has a document for you to sign.
All right.
Congratulations, Deputy Chief, and thank you very much. Russo, your fan club arrived here at about 3:30.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of them. I'm very touched.
And those are your in-laws, aren't they?
My in-laws are here. They are right there, yes. My mom is here, too.
Oh, I know that, but the in-laws, oh, my Lord. Yeah, they were a little intense when they got here, man. Where do the in-laws come from?
The Canadian.
It's south of here.
I'm familiar with it. They arrived early, it was nice.
They're very punctual.
I said, "What are you here for?" Mark what's his face, that's what they said.
I'm sure they did.
Please introduce all your guests who are with you tonight.
All right, well, there's a lot, so.
That's good.
I've got my wonderful wife, Katie.
Hi, Katie.
Next to her is my mother Gloria, okay? I've got my Uncle John, my brother, he's a little shorter than me, but he's standing over there, right by Deputy Chief Dean. And then, I've got my sons, Jack and Tim, Flincham Family, Kathy and Debbie.
Excellent.
Okay, I've got the Tucker Family and the Brish Family, so all in the back, a lot of Geneva citizens, so a lot of support.
That's exciting.
Yes.
Now, your mom is sitting next to your wife.
That is correct.
Just for the record, I like to invite, I like to ask folks who arrive if they like coffee, and you know what she said?
She likes...
Do you want to share with what you said?
Do you have wine?
She's not driving.
My God. Welcome to Betty Ford City Hall. How long you been with us there, big guy?
Just under 14 years. It'll be 14 years September 22nd.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
9-2-2.
Yeah.
And you came from?
I actually came from Lynn and Oaks, long history of...
In Naperville?
Yes, yes. Not as a patient.
Not, okay. But a heck of a place, though.
Yes.
Heck of a place. Saves and continues to save a lot of lives.
Absolutely, no, I very much enjoyed my time working there, and it's helped me greatly here.
You've had the honor, the pleasure, and the challenge of working with folks in distress.
Yes.
And...
Yes, it is.
Why police work?
I actually wanted to be an FBI agent before that, so when I looked at what my options were after already being out in the mental health field and not wanting to make too drastic of a change, I decided to take my career direction that way, and plus, it kind of was one of those things, you make more money in it than mental health unless you're going to have a master's degree, so I was not ready to go back to school for that, so...
Well, you know, if you pursued the FBI, they would eventually interview your mother.
Very true.
Unlikely you would have made the cut. So 14 years, still love the work, I know that.
I absolutely do, absolutely do.
And you and I have hung out sometimes with cool rides to school and all that kind of fun stuff. It's obvious that you enjoy being out and about in the community.
I like to talk a little bit, yes.
It's fun, though, isn't it?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do very much enjoy it, Mayor.
And any messages to those thinking of police work or those perhaps newest officers who are now, obviously, and have been looking up to you as a leader?
I would say if you're ready to engage in a challenging, I would say it's very rewarding, it's the most noble career profession out there, so if you're ready to challenge yourself and do something better for society, sign up.
Life is good.
Yeah.
Life is good. Should I ask Katie any questions, or?
You, please, please, why don't you come on up?
Oh, Katie, come on up.
Come on up.
The heck, man?
Sure, why not?
And, you know, I should have asked Deputy Chief this as well, but this is a family business when you're a police officer. It's all in, isn't it?
Yes, currently in midnight shifts.
Yeah. Are you still in the midnight shifts?
Well, taking the promotion, yes, I'm back to midnight.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, if you want me to change to another shift, you just put, right there, you let them know.
Right there. Yeah, that's tough, isn't it?
It can be, but, like I said, though, it's part of the deal, and a worthy sacrifice.
And Katie, what comments or thoughts or advice do you have to share?
To Mark, just that we're very proud of you, put a lot of hours in. He just came off the police academy as a supervisor, so it was a big commitment.
Huge commitment.
Yeah, it was good.
Yes.
Well, we're proud of him, too.
Thank you.
And Sergeant Russo, whoever you would like to have join you while our clerk administers the oath.
Yeah.
Prove it is yours.
Okay, Tim?
Bring the whole gang.
Yeah, bring the whole, yeah, don't bring the whole gang, the floor might like...
Bring everybody.
And right up here, guys.
I am Mark Russo.
Having been promoted to the position of Police Sergeant in the City of Geneva, county of Kane, afore said, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of Police Sergeant according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sergeant Jan Wokosz. Where's the... Oh!
Falling down on my job.
You have a big contingency as well.
Sure.
Sure. Now, anyone curious as to why some of our officers and sergeants and others are wearing beards?
Because I have a weak chin, so this helps me with my bone structure.
No, I know the real reason. Do you want to share the real reason?
That is the real reason.
Oh, is that the real reason?
Yeah.
I was told you had to make a contribution to Special Olympics in order to wear a beard anytime you wanted to.
That's also true.
That's also true. That's pretty cool. So look at all, and I believe the department raised in excess of $3,000 to...
That sounds about accurate.
Yeah, that's incredible, man. You have a, you have your family with you, so feel free to introduce those of you who are joining us.
The one making all the noise is Nico, my youngest son.
Nico!
My wife, Gosia, my daughter, Milanka, my mom, Halina, my father, Joseph, my grandpa, Richard, my grandma, Maria, Agnes, my brother's girlfriend, and then my oldest brother, Andy. It's a lot of names, all right?
No, it's good.
And then my bodyguard.
Absolutely. Now, you have a very unique background.
I would say so.
I think it's a fascinating background. Now, is this the grandma who did the recon?
Yes, she was the first one.
If you want to share that story, I think it's absolutely wonderful.
Yeah, so we're all basically first-generation immigrants. Every one of us was born in Poland, and we came here, my grandma, a number of years ago, which was, I think, 25 or more at this point, she kind of started the whole journey, and slowly, the family started immigrating over here and trying to chase the American dream, so it's very rewarding to be in this position now, knowing what my parents left behind and uprooted their whole life just to come here and for no other reason except to give me an opportunity and my brothers, so...
That is beautiful. Isn't that beautiful? Early in the evening, the sergeant said to me, you know, I'm not one on informality and all that stuff, but it really means a lot to me that my dad is here tonight.
Yep.
Why is that, Jan?
Because...
That's good, man.
He's a guy that taught me how to work hard, so I think that's one of the biggest separations between myself and others that I have is I just don't quit, I keep working, so hardest working man I know.
Congratulations, Dad. How do you say "I love you" in Polish?
Go hankje.
Go hankje. He's looking at me kind of weird right now.
Yeah.
I think I may have asked, invited him to have coffee, I don't know what the... Kafe?
Kawa.
Kawa. And you've been with us for how long, sir?
Eight years in the summer.
Yeah, it seems like a blink of an eye, doesn't it?
It really does, yes.
I know you love the work. Every time I see you, you're always in high spirits.
I try.
You have to work tonight.
Yeah.
But I think you said prior to the meeting, unless the chief wants to take your shift.
No, you offered to tell him that.
Oh, I did not, no, I did not.
Don't spin it around now, you offered to tell him that, so...
We can talk later. Family's doing well?
Yeah.
Family's proud of you?
Very.
What message do you have to the community? You have such a fantastic story.
We got to stick together. I mean, it's a very divisive time in the world, and I think if we come together as a community and learn to listen to each other a little bit more, we'll be just fine, so...
And you're going to help lead the way?
I hope so.
Absolutely. Nico is 17 months, and Melena?
Melena.
Melena is three. I believe she just turned three on June 28th.
Twenty-nine.
Way to go, dude, you told me the 28th. Didn't you? Yes, you did.
I did.
You did?
I did.
You did.
I did.
Where's Matt Han? Come on up.
I was close.
It was close, close. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
And thank you for choosing Geneva.
Thanks for having me.
And anyone you'd like to have join you while the clerk administers the oath? The floor is yours.
Yes, my wife, my kids, and I'll have my father.
Absolutely.
I am Jan Marhol.
I am Jan Wokosz.
Having been promoted to the position of Police Sergeant in the City of Geneva.
In the City of Geneva.
County of Kane.
County of Kane.
Before said, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of Police Sergeant according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you. Thank you.
Need a signature. It's not official till you're signed. Whoops, sorry. Right there.
Thank you.
Jan, it's my understanding you have approximately two and a half hours before you have to report to shift, right?
Right.
If you need to sneak out, and if anyone needs to sneak out, by all means, feel free to do so. Okay.
There's always a slate.
There's always a slate.
You know.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dad. C as in Charlie. Introduce our new colleague, administrative analyst Melissa Corano. Melissa, how are you?
I'm good, thanks.
Welcome.
Thanks for having me tonight.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, this is tough act to follow, though.
Isn't it tough?
Yeah.
We were going to hang out a couple of weeks ago, and you weren't feeling...
Thanks for having me.
And anyone you'd like to have join you while the clerk administers the oath? The floor is yours.
Um, yes, my wife, my kids, and I'll have my father.
Absolutely.
I, Jan Marlowe.
Hi, Jan Marlowe.
Having been promoted to the position of police sergeant.
Having been promoted to the position of police sergeant.
In the city of Geneva.
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane.
County of Kane.
Of Porus and Salome Square.
Of Porus and Salome Square.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police sergeant.
Of the position of the police sergeant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Johnny, say "dziezli".
Thank you.
Need a signature. It's not official till you sign. Whoops. Sorry.
Yeah, Jan, it's my understanding you have approximately two and a half hours before you have to report to shift, right?
Right.
If you need to sneak out, and if anyone needs to sneak out, by all means, feel free to do so. Okay.
There's always a slate.
There's always a slate. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dad. Ladies and gentlemen, our next item on the agenda is item D as in David. Correction, C as in Charlie. Introduce our new colleague, administrative analyst Melissa Corano. Melissa, how are you?
I'm good, thanks.
Welcome.
Thanks for having me tonight.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah. This is tough act to follow, though.
Isn't it tough?
Yeah.
We were gonna hang out a couple of weeks ago, and you weren't feeling well.
Uh, yeah, we've had a rash of sickness in our house, so I thought for sure I was gonna be jinxed this morning, but I'm here.
Yay! Share with me how long you've been with us, because I'm gonna get this wrong. I know I am.
I just started on June 6th.
Yeah, so it's been not even a month.
Uh, well, almost two.
Oh, June 6th, excuse me. I thought July 6th. So it's been, uh, six weeks.
Yeah.
Wow.
Wapping six weeks.
And you hail from?
Uh, Batavia Public Schools.
Nice.
Yeah. My hometown, so.
Oh, of course. Understood. Now, for those of us who aren't terribly familiar with the city hall, where are you hanging out here?
Uh, just right downstairs, hanging out with Ben, Administrative Services.
Yeah.
We share a wall, and then with Mira over in HR. She might pop up. Not sure.
She might pop up.
Yep.
And what did you do at the schools, Batavia?
I was in the business office, so I did everything from accounts payable when I first started to the financial coordinator when I left.
Well, that's cool.
Mm-hmm.
And why Geneva? Why this position?
Honestly, it came across my feed one day, and I thought it sounded interesting, and I was ready for a change.
That's cool.
And Geneva's a great town.
Yeah.
So I'd love to be a part of it.
Well, we're glad you're here.
Thanks.
Any... Anyone on the council have any questions or comments for Ms. Corano?
It's good to lay low.
It's still being televised, just so you know, so.
Okay.
Well, we're delighted that you chose us, and welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for doing this. This is really a nice honor.
Oh, good. You're welcome. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Now, item D. Item D, folks, is to consider approval of a special event application for the Concorde d'Elegance, scheduled for August the 28th, 2022. Is there a motion? Mr. Swanson makes the motion?
Second.
Mr. Caven gets the second. We have, of course, our friends that we've known forever, but before we turn it to you, we're gonna turn it to Ms. Dawkins for a brief summary.
Okay, so for your consideration is the request for the use of public right-of-way in City Services for the Concorde d'Elegance. Public admission is free for this event with a request for a donation to benefit Living Well Cancer Resource Center. Um, it's... As you know, this is one of the five events designated by the city as a city festival. It's staged along South Third Street from state to south, and concours is a well-known community tradition. The application includes information on the event boundaries, the street closures, car display areas, parking lots, registration, viewing area, information and staging areas, and public washrooms, and the vendor requests. Um, we do, as the mayor indicated, have the event organizer with us this evening, as well as Director Timoshenko, if you have any additional questions.
Anything new you want to share this year?
I can tell you about our features this year.
Yeah, come on up. That's always fun to hear about. It's good to see you guys again. It's gonna be perfect weather, too, isn't it?
Well, we hope so. Before I talk about the features, I would like to thank all of you. This event takes the efforts of so many people, and, uh, as they say, a village, and the city is a part of that village. We couldn't do it without all of you. Thank you. We have five features this year. We have, uh, in, uh, 1921, the Rolls-Royce Company in England started a factory in the US in Springfield, Massachusetts. They did that because there was a market here for their cars, and, uh, and it was a tax advantage to doing that, so they came here. So this is 100th birthday for the Springfield cars. The next feature is Continentals. Lincoln started manufacturing Continentals in 1940, and, um, we started out by looking for the Mark series of Continentals. The first one was a Mark II in 1956, enormous long car with a hood that's, uh, looks like it's about 10 feet long. And then, um, all of the cars before that were Mark I's, and after that there's Marks I's, III's, and IVs and V's. We're... We're doing something with, uh, micro and micromini cars. That's cars that are less than 100... 700 CC engines. It's tiny engines. They're usually built, um, by Eastern Bloc countries because, uh, they had to use what they had available in motorcycle scooters, engines, things like that. And, uh, also in some countries that it was a tax advantage for them to build cars with small engines. We are... We're having a feature of classic-era cars. That's generally things from the 20s and 30s, and they're considered classics by the Classic Car Club of America. Um, although in our, uh, our display, there will be some that are not classics, but a lot of 20s and 30s cars. We're also doing something new this year to try and help the car hobby along, to encourage youth to be involved and get more involved. We looked... We looked around, and we found that there's an awful lot of interest in, uh, in the youth today in cars that are called tuners, which are basically... Usually they're Japanese cars, not always, but the, uh, they're not expensive cars, and they can do a lot of, um, work on them to increase the performance of the engine performance, because a side part of this is a thing called drifting. You've probably seen some videos of that. They're on these courses, and they have amazing car control when they're... They're driving them. A way to think of it, or to try and understand what it is, is... Would be to look at, uh, the, um, um, the Fast and Furious movies. You've probably seen some of them. I've seen promotions for them if you're not really into that, but that's kind of the idea of what a tuner car is. And they're generally younger people, and we're hoping to do a little cross-pollinization by having a class for them also. That covers the five that, five groups that we have.
And this year marks... How many years?
18.
That's something.
Yeah.
And I think what's also most fascinating is that these concorders are also held where?
Well, there's... There are quite a few around the country. There's a couple of really big ones. One is in Pebble Beach. It's probably, well, it'd be considered the, uh, the best of the concours in the whole world.
Is that right?
Uh-huh. And the second big one in this country is in Amelia Island. Both very successful, very large events. And then there's a lot of, um, of, um, smaller-scale ones like us around the country.
It's fascinating.
Yeah.
Questions or comments from the council? Ms. Burghardt?
Thank you for being here. Uh, my nephew is very much into drifting, so I might get him up from Springfield to come visit me.
Well, that's great. That's just the kind of thing we're hoping will happen.
Yeah, he races little go-karts down in central Illinois, so he's...
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely coming up with my dad, working on their '57 Chevy together, so it's good to get younger people. And I hear there's... I mean, I hear with the pandemic, though, there was a lot of interest in classic cars, and a lot of people pouring money into and time into some of these, uh, beloved older cars. Is that... Is that true? I hear that... My dad, I hear him talking with his friends about the market for some of these could be pretty hot.
Sadly, uh, it's not... It's... It's kind of a... There's a lot of things. I see this in, uh, people who are interested in airplanes and boats and cars. Um, there's not, um... We're all wondering where it's gonna go, what's gonna happen, and so we're looking for ideas for... To try and create more interest among youth. Um, I hope your experience is more true than mine.
What is the most expensive car that you anticipate having? Or the highest-value car?
Uh...
Is it one of the Rolls-Royces?
I haven't considered that in the... In the list of cars, um...
I mean, years past, there's been, you know...
The car you picked out last year, the Duesenberg, that was about a, uh, a $5 million car.
No kidding?
Yeah.
They let me drive it, too. Is that right? That was $5 million bucks?
I... I think that, yeah, they're... They're very, very rare, very sought after. Maybe that's why there's not so much youth in...
God.
Who has that kind of money?
Isn't that something? And of course, those aren't really that often driven, are they?
No. Um, that one, I don't think it's ever driven unless it comes to an event like this.
Really?
Yeah.
Here's a million bucks off the price tag. Wow. Well, we just absolutely loved the event. It is extraordinarily well-done, and we're very proud of both of you, of course, and all the volunteers that you amass year in and year out. So, Mr. Kilburg?
Just to reminisce a little bit, you might, uh, share a little bit about how this event came to Geneva. And I believe Paul Dakota was involved in that.
Exactly, yes. Um, they... Paul Dakota and a... And a couple of other individuals got together and thought that they would try to do this. The very first year, they were in, um, parking lot at the courthouse. And then the following year, the city allowed them to, uh, use the streets, and it's grown from there.
Well, thank you for, uh, you know, your ongoing contribution to this event. Uh, it's very well-attended. Uh, it's an incredible display of, uh, auto engineering, and, uh, to reminisce, uh, it's... It's quite a day, and, uh, I look forward to, uh, being there in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion and we have a second to approve the request. Voice vote is sufficient. Although, if you agree, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, the 2022 Concorde d'Elegance has been approved. Thank you. Item E, as in Edward, consider approval of special event application for Vargo Dance Thriller on 38, October 13, 2022. Motion by Mayor? Seconded by Burghardt. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So Vargo Dance submitted a special event application for their fourth annual thriller on 38 performance, planned for October 13th, 2022, with a rain date of October 20th. The event require... Requires the closure of a portion of Second Street north of state and south of Hamilton, and includes food and non-alcoholic beverage sales. The applicant is requesting a waiver of the itinerant license fees and insurance to allow for the food trucks to participate. The application has been reviewed by all city departments and is recommended for approval. Um, and this evening, we have Director Timoshenko present, if you have any additional questions.
Any questions at all for the director? Seeing none? Sensing none? All in favor of the motion and the second? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, the 2022 Thriller on 38 on October 13th has been approved. Amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening, ladies and gentlemen? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine, and they can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Mr. Marx makes the motion? Ms. Mayor makes the second. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, the omnibus agenda has been approved. We jump down to number 10, municipal bills for payment, and we kindly ask our clerk to read in the aggregate our... The total bills for our consideration.
Bills for payment are $1,843,443.95.
Mayor, I move we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet on the city website.
There's a motion by Bruno to pay the bills as presented, which are available in the council members' packets and on the city's website. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Burghardt. Any questions or comments? A roll call is in order. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready?
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The bills have been approved with nine votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and one absent. We jump to item 12, folks, presentations of ordinances, resolutions, petitions, and bids. Item 12A is, consider approval of resolution number 2022-69, recognizing State of Illinois Rebuild Illinois Program Grant Award and committing local funds. Is there a motion to put this on the floor?
So moved.
Mr. Bruno makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Marx. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so in June 2020, the city held a public hearing and approved resolution 202034, authorizing an application to the State of Illinois Rebuild Illinois Grant Program and committing local funds to assist with the financing of a new electric substation and distribution facility to service the southeast master plan area. At the time of application, the project budget cost was estimated to be $13 million. In October of 2021, the city received notice that the project was awarded $1.8 million in economic development program funds. Since that time, the city has been working with the state-required grant administrator to advance the project through the state's extensive clearance process. One aspect of the clearance process is verification of project costs. As estimates have risen to $16 million, the state is requiring the city to update the previously approved resolution with new cost estimates. Construction of the electrical substation and distribution improvements will further efforts to develop the planned industrial park. The industrial park will represent 2.62 million new square footage of industrial space within the city. Development of this industrial park is not possible without the proposed substation and distribution improvements. And then with us again this evening is Director Timoshenko, who can answer any additional questions you have.
Any questions for Director Timoshenko? Sensing none? Seeing none? A roll call vote would be in order. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready?
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12A has been approved. Item 12B is to consider approval of resolution number 2022-70, accepting a public utility easement made by... Check this out. 01 underscore D Kids, comma LLC for the benefit of the City of Geneva. Is there a motion? Mr. Marx makes the motion. Ms. Mayor makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so similarly, to further the development of the southeast master plan area, staff has secured a public utility easement from an adjacent property owner at no cost to the city. The easement provides for an essential east-west connection for water, electric, and other utilities as needed. This is the final easement in a series of five off-site easements for this project. And Kathleen is still with us this evening, if you have any additional questions.
Any question?
Has not yet escaped.
Not yet. Any questions for Director Timoshenko? Seeing none and sensing none? Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, item 12B has been approved. Item 12C is to consider resolution number 2022-71, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the County of Kane for household hazardous waste collection services and rider two, the offer of the contract, which is RFP 22-010, with clean harbors, environmental services incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $30,000 annually.
Twenty thousand.
Does that say 20? We're gonna have to increase the font to 24. There we go. $20,000. I stand corrected. Forgive me. Is there a motion?
Some of them.
Mr. Swanson?
Second.
Second. Seconded by Burghardt. Ms. Dawkins?
So in March 2022, resolution 202222 was approved, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Kane County for the household hazardous waste collection service. After approval by Geneva, Kane County made two changes to the IGA. The first change implements an automatic renewal of the IGA until termination is sought by either party, and the second change adds the master agreement between the county and the contractor to the IGA. Staff recommends that the revised IGA be approved, and if you have any additional questions, Director Babica has now joined us.
Any questions for Director Babica? Regarding item 12C. Seeing none? Sensing none? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12B has been approved. Item 12B is to consider approval of resolution number 2022-70, accepting With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12C has been approved. Item 13, folks. Public comment and new business. Oh, yes. Welcome.
Hi, I have a comment.
Please come up, join us. Thank you. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good. My name is Chrissy Swanson, and I would like to talk about the Pride rent, which is the fire hydrant at the corner of, the northwest corner of Kirk and 38. So, I'd like to take a moment to thank a few organizations and people. Let me first mention the entirety of the Geneva Police Department. They are doing a wonderful job in a highly irregular situation. I appreciate each one of them, and their front desk, and the dispatch center. I used to work for the dispatch center, so I don't want to forget them. I would also like to thank Mayor Burns for his continued support, and the Geneva DEI Task Force, Fox Valley Pride, FVA Facebook group, and everyone who has reached out to me personally to offer encouragement and support in various ways. I am certain that I am missing someone, but be assured that you are also appreciated. Next, I would like to explain my goal in repainting the hydrant. It is the same as the city's goal and that of my supporters. We want to live, we want people to live in an area of safety, respect, and peace. Now I would like to explain why I continue to call attention to this matter. I believe we can't forget about this. It will not go away. I believe we need to uncover the infection that is hatred and treat it so it doesn't continue to fester unchecked until the situation is out of control. The attention I am calling to the defacing of the pride rent is not in an effort to say our police department is not taking the matter seriously. Some individuals comprising the Geneva Police Department are working incessantly on this case, at times to the detriment of training and time off. Again, thank you to everybody. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. And I love the use of pride rent.
Pride rent.
Who coined that term?
Terry Helford.
Way to go, Terry. Nicely done. Does anyone else have a statement? Because I have a statement as well I'd like to read, and mine is perhaps not as eloquent or diplomatic as Ms. Swanson's.
I can sit down, right?
No. Yes, of course. Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for speaking. Again, great job. I couldn't agree with you more, and I love your passion, and I love your dedication, and I love the message that you're sending. And I find it devastating. There's so much hate in this world, and for people to act so ignorantly, and... Just, we're all human. That's the bottom line. We're all human. It doesn't matter what your orientation is. It doesn't matter what your preferences are. It doesn't matter what color your skin is. We are all human, and the list of things that we have in common far exceeds our differences. And I wish that we could all just embrace that and embrace each other's differences and not feel scared or hatred towards anything that is different. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Ladies and gentlemen, I do have a statement to read. I am honored that our friends are here this evening as well. I want this deliberately read into the record because I don't want anyone to misunderstand what my position is, nor what this administration, council, or community's position is. Silence in the face of bigoted and hateful assaults on others are acts of complicity. Imagine being so fragile, so unwell, so paranoid, narrow-minded, and afraid of a pattern of colors that you are compelled to attempt to erase those colors time and time again. Imagine for just a moment that a symbol of inclusion is so upsetting to you because you believe that inclusion of others diminishes your own standing, your own place in this world. So upsetting that you have to go out of your way while traversing a busy roadway, pull over, and try to erase such a symbol. Yes, our police department did excellent work and apprehended the suspect just last week, who was accused of defacing the pride fire hydrant five times. But just as we were all breathing a sigh of relief that the culprit had been found, the hydrant was again defaced. And its defacement, if defacement wasn't enough, a phrase was added to the hydrant that encouraged violence on the LGBTQ plus community. To the weak, broken, and despicable person who committed this latest crime, be advised, you will be found, you will be arrested, you will be charged, and you will be prosecuted. Your intimidation failed. We will not be scared into silence or frightened into not living our most authentic lives. In fact, you've inspired us to reaffirm one of the central tenets of Geneva, to be an inclusive and welcoming community. Oh, and how I wish that the story ended there. But alas, bigotry has a way of attracting even more bigots. Just yesterday, it was reported to the Geneva Police Department that another fire hydrant, one that was not part of the Art on Fire program, but nevertheless, was defaced with what can only be described as one of the most heinous symbols known to humankind, the swastika. A visual obscenity so pernicious, so weaponized, so malignant that it requires immediate, irrevocable, and unmistakable condemnation. So let me be crystal clear. This administration, this council, this community condemns the individual or individuals who spray painted this symbol on city-owned property, and we will stop at nothing to find you, arrest you, charge you, and prosecute you. It's often said that racist thoughts and actions, folks, say far more about the person they come from than the person or people they are directed to. Perhaps that's true. And if that's true, then I say to the people who have committed these crimes, I pity you. You are a broken human being in so, so many ways. But I do hope that you find the help that you so desperately need from what obviously poisons you, has poisoned you, and continues to poison you. I sat at this very day as almost five years ago, as many of you recall, when vandals and hate-mongers desecrated our community with signs and messages of intolerance. And I spoke again about the unacceptable nature of that crime. To our LGBTQ plus community, whether you call Geneva home or visit Geneva, you have my word that your safety is our highest priority. I respect you. I admire you. I support you, and I love you. Anyone or any group who tries to intimidate, frighten, silence, or erase your pride, your passion, your purpose, will fail spectacularly. And to the curator of the hate symbol painted on the other fire hydrant, whether you be a white nationalist, an anti-Semite, prone to superiority complex, or suffer from all three of these afflictions, and likely more, your attempt to intimidate or frighten us has also failed. Geneva will never tire from fighting at every level and in every way. Your restricted and contaminated view of the world and your sad, sickening, sterile efforts to poison Geneva. Thank you. The floor is still open for anyone else who wishes to comment about anything. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting, and we'll take just a one-minute transition break before the committee of the whole meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Caven makes that motion. All in favor of adjourned the council meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, folks. Microphones are off.
Good evening. My name's Dean Kilburg, Alderman in the Third Ward, and I'm calling to order the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, August 1st, 2022. Let the record show everyone's in attendance except Alderman Kostrog. Item two recommends pending the rules to permit Councilmember Kilburg to chair this meeting and to vote on all action items on this agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Swanson.
Second.
Seconded by Maladra. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. It's unanimous. Item three, approved committee of the whole minutes from June 20, 2022, and July 11, 2022, and special committee of the whole minutes from, excuse me, July 18, 2022, and special committee of the whole minutes from June 27, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Mayor. Seconded by, by, Caven. Voice vote is sufficient. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Item four, items of business this evening. Item A, consider draft resolution authorizing acceptance of the 2022 Employee Benefit Program Plan renewal effective November 1, 2022. Dawkins? Oh, excuse me. Moved by Mayor. Seconded by Maladra.
Thank you. Employee health, dental, vision, and life insurance coverages renew on November 1, 2022. Open enrollment for employees, retirees, and those eligible for COVRA is set to occur mid-September of 2022. The Blue Cross Blue Shield Illinois Medical Insurance Renewal initially sent to the city's insurance broker showed an increase of 8.6%, and through the broker's efforts, they were able to secure a reduced rate increase of 4%. The increase is consistent with projections and may be accommodated within the existing budget. The dental plans are recommended for renewal without an increase in premium or funding levels. Per the renewal terms, the Delta Dental monthly administrative fee, however, will increase by 1.95%. The Standard Insurance Company provides the city with life, accidental death, and dismemberment insurance. The city obtained a two-year rate guarantee for the period ending October 31, 2024, with no increase in premiums as compared to the current plan year. And lastly, this is the final year of a four-year rate guarantee for the VSP voluntary vision program. Employees who wish to participate in the plan fund the full cost. There is no additional cost to the city to provide this voluntary benefit. So with us this evening are representatives from the city's insurance broker. We have Boomer Whipple. We have Assistant City Administrator McCready and HR Generalist Johnson to answer any additional questions you may have.
Okay. Questions? Anyone? Mr. Whipple, you traveled here tonight. I think you should come to the podium. Tell us a little bit about our benefits package for next year.
Well, first, I thank you for the time, and kudos to Ben and Mira. For those who have been here for a while, this is the earliest we've ever been doing this, August 1. I've got some clients that have 9-1 renewal dates, and I can't get them to meet with me. So appreciate everybody's time. It's, for those who were here last year, last year was a tough renewal because of the claims. And you guys made some changes. The city made some changes to the benefit program, eliminating the HMOI network, moving everybody into the Blue Advantage Network. And that helped, but claims were a little bit better this year than they were last year. They weren't great. We're still running at 100% loss ratio on the PPO, but compared to the HMO, the PPO is running better and is improving. And part of the rate relief that we were able to obtain is based on your longevity and loyalty to Blue Cross. If you remember last year, when we solicited bids from other carriers, three of them declined, and the one that did offer a proposal was uncompetitive. So, one of the reasons that we're able to get the rate relief this year and most years is because of the fact that the city does a good job of education for the employees, and we're set to do that again this year in mid-September. We do employee meetings to make sure that everybody here recognizes the wellness benefits and initiatives that are available through the Blue Cross program, and also the fact that regardless of which of the three plans are on, preventative's covered 100%. So, never want an increase, but it is below trend for what we're seeing for groups your size. So, all in all, thrilled to be doing this on August 1, too, for an 11-1. So, that's great.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Maybe there's a question now? This is pretty simple this year.
Better than last year, yes. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move forward with the proposed plan. We'll need to read the roll.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay, item B, consider draft ordinance authorizing the disposal of personal property owned by the city of Geneva, fire department truck number 201, the 1994 Pierce Arrow. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
By Bruno. Seconded by Marx. Those, okay.
So, the new fire tower truck is anticipated to be in service in October of this year, and the new truck will replace truck 201 that has served our community for more than 28 years. The request this evening is to declare truck 201 a surplus, and then the fire department will advertise and seek a buyer at the highest available offer price. However, in the event that a qualified buyer cannot be found, the department will entertain a transfer of the truck to a fire training academy for the purposes of firefighter training and education. And with us this evening, we have Chief Antonori, who can answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions of the chief? Chief, since you came out tonight, too, you might tell us a little bit about the history of that truck and some of its, its history as, in its service to the community.
Sure. Truck 201, which is a 1994 Pierce Arrow, replaced truck 206 back in 1994. Truck 206 was our first Snorkel. It was bought in 1964. So, we've had a long history of Snorkels. We are now breaking tradition and replacing it with a tower ladder, and it's sitting now at the dealer in Aurora, being final checked out. We should have in our station sometime later this week, and we'll have a two-month training outfit before we put in service in October. So, Snorkel, truck 201, towards the end of its life, saw its biggest fire ever at Pheasant Run. Got the flow of water there. And then that large fire in Bartlett with that warehouse that went up a number of months ago, it flew water for a couple of days. So, it's still a fine piece of equipment. We're expecting, because of the marketplace of taking three years to get a new fire vehicle and the extreme prices, that its used market may be more favorable than it was just a few years ago. So, we're hopeful it can find a good home.
Good.
Thank you.
So, what do we do with the old truck when the new one arrives? Do we park the new one outside?
No, it'll, they both fit in the station barely. So, it'll be a little tight for a couple of months. But once again, if we get a qualified buyer, we'll hopefully be able to have it leave around October. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for coming out. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you please read the roll?
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Item C, consider draft resolution authorizing the purchase of 23 sets of firefighting turnout gear in the amount of $61,580 through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Group. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Caven. Seconded by Swanson. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So, this one's relatively easy. The request is to purchase 23 sets of turnout gear through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. You will notice that tonight there were some questions posted on the website that were asked. So, we have two sets of turnout gear for each firefighter. That includes career and paid-on-call. And so, we put one in the front line, and then five go in front line, five go in back line, and then we continually cycle them out. But again, Chief Antonori is here for any of those real technical questions, and he would be happy to address those.
Are there any questions? If not, we're ready to move forward. Would you please read the roll?
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Item D, consider draft resolution authorizing the rejection of the 2022 sidewalk and curb maintenance bid from Alliance Contractors Woodstock, Illinois. Is there a motion? Moved by Marx. Moved by Marx, seconded by Mayor. Ms. Stalkins?
So in June, we had a bid opening for the annual sidewalk and curb replacement project, no bids were received, so then we resolicited bids and scheduled a second bid opening in July. At that bid opening, one bid was received, which was nearly 50% over the budgeted estimate. Therefore, staff is recommending that the received bid be rejected, and the project will be rescheduled and rebid at a future date. And with us this evening, we have Director Babica to answer any additional questions.
Do we have any questions from the council? Alderman Bruno?
Director Babica, I guess this should be for the, all the sidewalk painting that's gone around now, does this contract play into those replacements? Or is this under some other?
I'm going to couch that answer. Because what we have found is there have been some unauthorized markings of sidewalks.
Really?
And so the markings, probably the majority of those markings are ours and are legitimate, but we have had case to go out there to remove other markings that were done by unknown parties.
Interesting.
All you really need to do is give us a call, and we'll come out, take a look at them, and if they need to be done, we'll get them done.
So, but those stretches of sidewalk that are marked were to be handled under this bidding, this contract here?
Either this contract or through the annual infrastructure program.
Thanks.
Is there any, any Alderman, Alderman Burghardt?
Thank you. Do we have any other timeline for when we might try this again, or do you think we'll have to combine or just delay it by an entire year or this project, program?
Currently, we're looking at the meeting schedule as well as the possibility of getting the work still done before middle of October. That's really when we start running into marginal weather conditions. If not, then our intent would be to try to get a project in in the spring, but that'll also be weather dependent, and now we're very much dancing to Mother Nature's tune.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Mayor?
Do you think the concrete market has played into this bidding? Is that the lack of aggregate being distributed, is that why people aren't bidding right now?
The pit workers were on strike most of the summer, they went back to work last Tuesday, so aggregates becoming more readily available, and that is what we're attributing it to.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Sidewalk grinding is not included in this, is it?
That's correct.
Okay, that's a separate bid.
Typically, it's under $20,000, so we get multiple quotes and present to the city administrator.
Has that taken place already this summer, or is that still planned to take place?
Still planned for this fall.
This fall, okay, great. Okay, any other questions? If not, we're ready to vote. Would you please read the roll? Thank you.
Thank you.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Item E, that was unanimous. Item E, considered draft resolution authorizing the display of directional signage on city utility poles within the city, within the Geneva Drive Right-of-Way for Lineage Logistics at 2088 Geneva Drive. Is there a motion? Moved by Swanson, seconded by Marx. Ms. Stalkins?
So the city has been working with Lineage Logistics to eliminate driver staging and parking on Geneva Drive. Driver movements and patterns have been studied, and Lineage is on track to begin a new check in process to eliminate driver staging beginning in August. Lineage has invested a significant amount to upgrade striping, directional signage, and to train employees. To support their efforts, they are requesting that the city temporarily allow posting of three directional signs on city light poles to direct guest drivers entering Geneva Drive. The signage will support the company's new procedures and enhance the business in a positive manner. With Lineage drivers removed, the police department may then address any other drivers parked or stopped illegally. Lineage is seeking authorization to erect the additional signage, direction signage on utility poles within the Geneva Drive Right-of-Way, as currently these signs would typically not be permitted by city code. Public Works would install the signs that will be displayed for 18 months and may be extended for an additional six months by the city administrator. Display after the two-year period must be authorized by City Council. So we do this evening have a representative from Lineage with us, and Director Timoshenko can also speak to this matter.
Good. Would any of members of the council have questions? I assume you're the representative. If you'd please come forward and introduce yourself, since you came out tonight, we'll give you a little camera time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And your name, sir?
Rick Olison, I'm the co-manager at the facility.
Great. Okay, any comments as it relates to some of the changes that are going to be taking place?
Yes, so today we started the new check-in procedure, and today was the first day in the five years that I've been at the facility that we have not had trucks parked on that road. So that will help with the trash, that will help with everything. It benefits us greatly, so we appreciate anything you can do to help with that effort.
And you think this, the signage will be helpful?
The temporary signage is going to be helpful in the short term. We noticed today that it's too small. We need bigger signage, we need for, actually more rudimentary signage, probably, but what will help a lot is what was happening on the street, and the committee probably knows this, is we get a lot of truckers there that just came there and they parked. They weren't our customers, they were just sleeping, they were gathering their hours and doing that, and that caused congestion there and a negative view of our facility, that we were delaying drivers, we were, it was a pain to come to. So without them on the street, it will benefit us greatly as well as Geneva.
Any questions? Alderman Bruno?
Just wanted to say thank you for partnering and working with the city.
Appreciate it.
Their resolve, thanks.
Your company's certainly an asset to the community, we certainly value your contribution to our industrial park, and your cooperation and help in addressing this and working through it over the next several months is appreciated, and if the city, I'm sure, staff is more than willing to support your efforts in any way that we can assist in making this as smooth a transition as possible, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Cheers, thanks, guys.
Is that ready to vote? Would you please read the roll?
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, is there any further public comment at this time? Any new business before the council, this Committee of the Whole Meeting? If not, we have a need tonight to go into a closed session on probable litigation 5ILCS120/2C11 and the purchase, sale, or lease of real property for the use of the public body, 5ILCS120/C5. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor.
Seconded.
Seconded by Caven. Would you please read the roll? Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, it's appreciated.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
It's unanimous, okay, unanimous. Okay, we're out of closed session, we're back, got guests into our Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there any, anything else anyone has to bring before the Committee of the Whole? Any new business, any comments? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Marx, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good night.